Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's still the morning. It's great. My name is Mike Kelly. I'm the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners in Johnson County, Kansas. We're here for a Committee of the Whole on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. I will note that all Commissioners, other than Commissioner Fast, are present, so we have a quorum, and therefore a duly constituted Committee of the Whole. We want to welcome and thank the team who has prepared this budget with our guidance and direction. Our County Manager, Ms. Post Oak Ferguson, our Budget Director, Robin Simes, and Mark Dapp from Budget and Financial Planning, thank you all very much for being here today. We're going to hear a presentation and then have an opportunity to continue our discussion on the 2026 budget. So with that, we will welcome Ms. Post Oak Ferguson.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. So yes, today, we are here to present the proposed 2026 budget. You can see the agenda as outlined here, the factors that went into the budget, the environmental scan. We want to highlight some efficiencies that demonstrate stewardship in this budget, historical trends, and then talk about strategies and going forward. So the first slide we wanted to highlight is one that you have urged us as staff to think of ways to get more information out about what are the county services that we provide. In consultation with Commissioners, we have come up with this. I think it's been very, received very well from the community at our community engagement sessions, and it's divided into three main categories. Those services where we serve as an administrative arm of the state government, you can see some of those examples, provide services required by the state, and then those provided locally as determined, locally services. And these are not an exhaustive list, but it gives you an example of those. For while we are mandated by the state to run our election office, motor vehicles, issue permits, maintain land records, and other service provisions, reimbursement rates are not keeping up with costs, for example. But we do appreciate that communications and budget have worked on that, that illustration of what county services we do provide as we're talking about our budget. So in building this budget, we've worked with you over the last several months, as Chairman kind of mentioned, we've had a series of meetings, and looked at a multi-year approach. So as you are aware, our increase in revenue has not quite kept up with the increase in expenses, whether it's inflation, growth, and other factors. So this is a budget that is a very responsible budget. This is a budget that allows us to continue our quality of services as, and we have seen results as demonstrated by our community satisfaction survey. It continues to show stewardship as evidenced by our triple AAA bond rating, or the highest bond rating a county can get. It also holds line a bit because we are in a multi-year approach, but for 2026, I had to say no to a few requests, and some of those folks are sitting behind me. But in many cases, it's a not right now. And so with the multi-year approach, the 2026 budget is done in context of that, with your direction for staff to put on the ballot a 2027 renewal of the public safety sales tax. We have a multi-year plan to approach the many things that we need and want to achieve. So a few key highlights on this page shows you that, yes, a flat mill levy is what we have been working with you on achieving in this budget. The one thing that I really want to point out is there's no new county property tax-funded FTEs, and that's excluding Parks and Library, but Parks and Library are relooking and seeing if they can make some reallocations. And we have not been able to achieve this in the county tax funds for over a decade since the impact of the Great Recession. That's something that for this size organization, we had to be very creative in order to continue our quality services, such as reallocating some for some positions for higher needs within the existing budget levels and shifting resources. So we'll highlight some of those as we go, but that is a key point in this budget. We are focusing on fundamentals, so the few increases that we were able to do really goes mostly to inflationary increases, and then also maintaining our existing services. It maintains a 28% target for reserves, which helps us be in good standing for continuing our high bond rating. And as I mentioned, there's a future focus with fiscal health, multi-year approach. Also, we'll highlight later in more detail, but the resource X or a program review that's underway on the expense side as well. So a number of things that we were able to achieve over this past year that demonstrates not only stewardship, but innovation and delivering on services, quality services to our community, is our first mention again of our community satisfaction survey. We are in the top 10%. We've achieved that three years in a row, which is the top ranking of any county in that pool. So pretty proud of it, and we think we can achieve this type, these type of results going forward with this budget as well. We allocated millions of dollars in funding towards one of your priorities, affordable housing, solutions, and homeless support, and we've highlighted that before. We will continue to highlight that throughout the budget process. We've created innovative pilots, and one of them you heard me highlight today in the meeting with a property tax relief to, for older adults and veterans. We've supported mediations to avoid evictions, encourage more landlords to accept tenants with housing vouchers. So those are some examples of innovative pilots that are in your priority areas, and we are looking to continue those in this budget. We did, two new Med Act stations were established, one newly constructed in Shawnee and the other remodeled in Lenexa. And as you all know, we just completed our strategic plan for transit, and we've got some implementation work to do, but that was months long in the making to have a plan going forward. Other things that we were able to achieve, the comprehensive plan was updated with new versions of airport land use compatibility plans. We reduced employee turnover from 16% in 2022 to 11.7% at the end of '24. We increased average applications for open positions for 16, from 16 in early 2023 to 49.4 at the end of 2024. And as you know, we reallocated resources to focus on community, communications and engagement with a new department dedicated to that focus. And we were able to achieve a high participation rate in the 2024 employee engagement survey. On the next slide, we're going to highlight a few examples of efficiencies. As departments report, they will go into more detail on some of these and additional efficiencies. Robin and I are going to kind of tag team on this slide. So Robin, you want to cover the first few?
Yeah. Robin Simes with Budget Financial Planning. First off is Department of Technology Innovation. As you may know, that we have consolidated GEMS and DTI into one department. And what that, what some of the things that they're doing and looking at, first thing is they've simplified our wireless networks in our county buildings. We used to have two separate systems, one for public safety and one for the county, and they've actually combined that. And so now someone from public safety can access the system here. And for instance, if I go to corrections, I'm able to access within that system as well. So again, we'll be able to reduce computers, and we'll also be able to, just technology overall, have more capacity and ability to do our work in different locations. The other thing is corrections. Again, as we've talked about in the past, we want to make sure we highlight not just the big savings or efficiencies, but also the small ones. Corrections streamline transportation offices or operations with new software. It actually saves $6,000 in fuel costs and 15,000 miles, and that's just in the first six months. So again, continued ongoing look at things we can do differently, ways we can save money within our budgets. And then also, just this last year, we moved to a fully self-funded medical design platform that actually saved us $1.1 million in premium savings for our county stop-loss coverage. As we know, healthcare costs are increasing, so any savings we can find is beneficial to the county and also to our employees.
And some examples in wastewater are, they've changed electronic billing customers, or really it surged because of changes that they've made, increased by 77%, and then auto pay customers increased by 29%. So those are things in efficiencies that save some staff time, which limits the demand for future growth in staff with those efficiencies, and hopefully helps us with the results in payments on time, et cetera. Another, we've talked about this, but it's worth noting, in the wastewater department, over the last year or two, we have saved $53 million in savings based on a revolving loan fund financing mechanism, and another $80 million in savings in infrastructure with the WIFIA program, which stands for the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act funding. And the intention of these examples are to show some small dollar things that add up, and I think that those small dollar items that we've shared so far and will continue to share are those things that we, we do every day. We don't always communicate that. I've heard that you guys want to hear more of those, and I think the community and you here deserve to hear how it's part of our culture. So we are doing a better job of trying to show those to the larger ones that you do hear about. And then we've got one more to highlight.
Yeah. And then finally, with the Sheriff's Office, again, working on collaboration between departments and also finding efficiencies and savings. They've actually reallocated an existing vacant position, and they have transferred that to our legal department so that our legal staff can focus on sheriff operations and legal issues, and hopefully reduce our outside consulting. And so again, collaboration between departments, and that's just a great example of what we've seen. And so again, these are really some of those accomplishments, but then as we move into the 2026 budget, we want to look at what the economic outlook is and what has driven where we are today. And so again, proud to maintain the AAA bond rating. It's the highest possible rating, and it puts us in the top 2% of all counties in the nation. We also, as again, like we just have shown, we continue to look for efficiencies and innovations to find any savings that we can in our county budget. But despite those innovations and creativity, we do face several factors that are challenging our county's financial sustainability, both on the revenue and the cost side. So some examples of those, as we've mentioned and everyone's aware of, rising costs due to inflation. We also have slowing revenue growth in our assess valuation and our sales and use taxes. We have reduced revenue from the state that we'll highlight. Property tax relief, that's definitely a desire by our residents. However, giving property tax relief with a growing and aging population is also a challenge that we'll be facing in the future. Federal and state legislation is continuing to impact our revenues and any possible legislation in the future that we are unaware of at this time. And then also GDP growth. It's important that we need to continue to look and continue to grow in our community, and that way we can expand our revenue base to help also reduce property tax in the future. So some of those factors that I've talked about, just to give you a little bit more detailed information, we've seen inflation increase from 2021. It's six, it went from 1.4 to 6%. It has gone down a little, but it still does remain higher than it has in the past. Also, from 2019 to 2024, the cumulative increase in CPI was 22.5%, while the increase in the building cost index was 36.5%. So some of those inflation impacts to just our own county services. Again, the most fundamental services that we have, food and medical contracts for the corrections and Sheriff's Office, they've increased between 27 and 54% in the last four years. Public works on our commodities, they've increased in concrete 51%, asphalt 23, and metal culverts at 80%. And then just in our technology and innovation, we've seen a 16% increase in just one year for our maintenance contracts on technology. As far as our sales and use tax growth, again, we're really returning to our pre-COVID levels. We reached as high as 15 to 25% during COVID. However, now we've gone back to one, two and a half percent for sales and use taxes. And again, with spending habits, tariffs, inflation, we need to continue to monitor that, and we'll continue to do that throughout the year and provide any updates if we see any fluctuations in that. As far as the housing market, with property tax making up 26% of our revenue, it's very important to follow the housing market to determine the flow of that revenue source. So our home sales decreased 14.8% in 2022 and also 18.6% in 2023. They slightly improved in 2024 with a 0.9% increase. The average supply of homes in our community is 1.9 months, whereas five to six months is really where we need to be to have a balanced market. So again, housing definitely impacting our revenue and our sales. And then also, the other impact right now is our more 30-year mortgage rate is at 6.8%. So again, that does hinder people's ability to go out and purchase homes. For assessed valuation, before 2023, the county's property tax ranged from 4.5% to 7%. Again, we really saw two outlier years in 2023 and 2024, where we reached 10 and 11% of assessed valuation growth. But now you can see that we're trending back to, again, those normal years for the county where we range between 5 and 7%. As far as assessed valuation and the impact on our residents, we've actually seen the assessed valuation, the residential portion increase as compared to the total. That's been due to state legislation that's impacted, that has exempted machinery and equipment for commercial properties. So the personal property portion has actually decreased from 23 to 1%, whereas residential has gone up from 47 to 70% of the total. Excuse me. As we face rising costs, we also face the challenges of serving more people, some of who in our community are our most vulnerable. Older adults will account for over half of all population growth in the Kansas City region, and between 2020 and '25, the number of people 65 and older is anticipated to increase 56%. That increase in our population and our aging population is impacting some of our services. We're seeing a 4% increase annually in our Med Act call volume, and the data shows that a majority of calls, excuse me, come from those age 50 and older. So the increased call volume can put stress on the system, which also impacts Med Act's response time. Their current goal is to arrive on scene under 10 minutes 90% of the time. Impacts are also hitting our aging services. In two years, aging and human services has seen a 69% increase in nutrition services participants, and they've also seen meals provided in that same time period have an increase of 42%. So again, as the aging population increases, there'll be continued increase on those demand for services. So as we talked before about GDP, while we know demographics have an impact on our service demand, we also know that increased GDP growth will increase demands on resources. Johnson County has the most growth in the state and in the region, and we had 65% of that growth as the Kansas GDP from 2018 to 2023. In our region, Johnson County had the highest GDP growth at 55% from 2018 to 2023. A growing GDP can lead to more job growth, newer businesses, and help sustain our community. However, this also requires additional investment in infrastructure, housing, roads, and other services that those businesses provide. So as we also talked about, reductions to revenue through state legislation. So this really illustrates those revenue sources that have been reduced or eliminated by state legislation. Local avalon tax relief and city-county revenue sharing, it was eliminated in 2003. Mortgage registrat- Mortgage registration fee was phased out beginning in 2015, and machinery and equipment exemptions began in 2007. So if you look at 2024, the impact of those reductions to our revenues have been about $39.6 million, which equates to 2.7 mils of our budget. The county has also done some work as far as saving taxpayers and residents. We've decreased the mill levy in seven of the past eight years. Impact of 2.482 mils from 2017 to 2025 has created an annual reduction amount of $39 million in 2025. So again, saved that much savings to our taxpayers. And that's a 12% overall reduction in our mill levy in that time period. So again, the economic factors in history, it really gives us a backdrop for where we are in 2026 and how we've put the budget together. So as Penny mentioned before, just to highlight key points of the budget, we have a flat mill levy, 24.125 mils, and that's a flat mill levy for all three county, or for all three taxing districts. No new county property tax-funded FTE. We've used reallocations of existing vacant or other resources to fund any new FTE. We focus on fundamentals for inflationary increases and maintaining existing services, and we have maintained our 28% target. So as far as our 2026 timeline, after today, we will have department presentations beginning on May 22nd. Those will go until June 12th. And then on June 13th, we will have a deliberation session with the board for any revisit items or to finalize any other questions or decisions. June 26th, we'll set the maximum expenditure budget. And then August 20th is our budget public hearing. We actually have a venue change this year just to accommodate additional residents if they want to come in and give opinions or advice on the budget. We are going to have that at the Olathe Conference Center, and so there'll be a little more room and capacity for our residents. And then on August 28th, that will be our actual budget adoption here in our board chambers. So as far as just looking at the numbers, right now, our 2026 budget is $1.9 billion. 1.3 is operating expenditures and 508 million is reserves. 24.125 mils is our constant mill levy, and right now we have 4,409 FTE. We did include 23.97 new FTE, but again, that's only funded with reallocations, grants, or other revenue sources for those new positions. We also had 28.81 FTE added since 2025. However, those, again, were funded with grants or fees, and really the primary increase there would be in mental health. If you look at a breakdown of our operating revenue, we actually have about 29% of our operating revenue that's property tax. 21% of that is the county taxing district, with 4% for library and park and recreation. 24% of our revenues are made up of charges for services, and wastewater is a big portion of that. Bond proceeds, again, that's wastewater, 13%. Other taxes include sales and use, motor vehicle tax, and that's 13%. And then really, the other portion is intergovernmental, 7%, and that's federal and state grants that we receive. So as far as how that revenue breaks down into our strategic program areas and our expenditures, we have 37% of that goes to infrastructure. However, if you look at the chart, you can see 28% of that is really dedicated to wastewater, which are completely user-fee funded. 25% is for public safety, and that includes all of our public safety departments such as corrections, sheriff, Med Act, and the others listed there. And then the others follow in with Culture and Rec at 12, Support Services at 12%, and then Health and Human Services at 11%. So when we look at a $1.9 billion budget, it's not like we're out there spending $1.9 billion. There is a breakdown here, and so if you start with our total budget at $1.9 billion and then you remove reserves, that's what gets you to our 1.39 operating budget. However, between grants, fees, other dedicated revenue sources, when you remove those, it really gets you down to $557 million as far as a county property tax-supported expenditure budget. And then after you remove other dedicated revenue sources, then you're really at $287 million is our county property tax revenue. Parks and Library is not included in that. If you include them, they're at about $50 million each, and which gets you to about $389 million. So once you have the $1.9 billion, when you really break it down into what impacts our county property tax residents, it's $287 million.
Chair, is there a point in time where we can ask questions?
Well, we're trying to get through the presentation. I think there will be, and given that it is a long presentation, so we'll take an off-road. I think there's a good breaking point coming up here in a couple of slides where we'll do some questions. Is that fair?
The next two slides demonstrate the lens with which we make decisions on requests for additional resources. These are the five focus areas that the board adopted for the 2025 and 2026 budget, and so we use those as we look at what should be included in the budget and our future focus. 2025 community priorities, this really gives us insight into what our residents value most. Perceptions of life in Johnson County still remain strong as a place to live, raise children, and a place to work. In the survey, the most critical roles for the county in the next 10 to 20 years are making necessary Health and Human Services available, coordinating public safety and law enforcement, and also maintaining high-quality emergency services. The community's top survey, or top five priority services include Department of Emergency Services, which includes Med Act and emergency preparedness, parks, elections, libraries, and the sheriffs. So then as we look at actually how we break down the budget, for 2026, this is our valuation estimate. As you know, in February, we get that beginning number, which was 7.19%. However, that does not include appeals. So we have an estimated appeal amount of $150 million, which brings our assessed valuation to 6.23% or our real property. Once we factor in an estimated reduction of 5% in personal property, and then about a 3% increase in utility property, that gets us to our estimated assessed valuation right now at 6.12%. And we assume that we will be close to that in June, and that's when we'll actually receive those certified numbers from the appraiser. So again, we talked about assessed valuation growth. Just wanted to give you a quick update. Again, you can kind of see that normalized amount between 5% and 7%. However, we do know that there is a point in time when we could have a reduction in assessed valuation. You can see from about 2009 to 2013, we actually had negative growth during the Great Recession. So again, always something to be aware of. And again, this is also why we have reserves for those unknown unforeseen circumstances that may impact our county. Do you want to take a break?
Yeah, I think this is where I had where we were going to go into assumptions in the general fund, five-year forecast. So Robin can take a deep breath. Thank you very much. Let's have questions just to what we've seen thus far. I know that some things are going to overlap. We're going to hear some good information diving into more detail, but just questions thus far, I mean, much of this, kind of the table setting we've talked about before, but are there other general questions or points that we'd like to make at this point? Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Chair. Just out of curiosity, so don't throw daggers at me. On page number, what's the page number? Page number four. So I'm just out of curiosity, how many employees, because I see that Parks and Recreation, their mill levy is lower than the library, isn't there?
That's due to the library's assessed valuation is actually lower because it excludes Olathe, and so they actually receive approximately the same amount of property tax revenue, which is about $50 million. So that's the differentiation there. Parks and Rec, they have all of the assessed valuation in the county, whereas the library excludes Olathe, so it's lower.
Okay, that was a question. The other thing that I've been getting questions on, residents commenting on the county spending a lot of money on transit, but that's not the case. Taxpayer dollars going towards transit.
There is a transfer, there is some funding that goes to transit, and when we get to those budget presentations, we can go through that detail as well.
And let's see, I tried to keep my question. And then on page number seven, when you guys were breaking things out, you know, I don't know how many calls I've received on the bill going over outside of Kansas, you know, outside of Johnson County to paying, and I know that was, I'm just going to round it off, saved almost $300,000 by changing a different, going with a different partner, and we didn't put that in here. And that is just something I get so many calls on, but there was a cost, and that's the reason why. So it's no more, you know, we're not taking jobs away from anybody, we're actually saving money. And then I was wondering, also on, this is just little bitty things, but I often would love to be able to put up the dollars that have been saved, even though, because, you know, you add them up, they're significant. So the money and the effort that goes into those core reports and the cost of doing all those core reports, I mean, it's to the point where, I mean, people are freely just requesting them all the time, and I don't know if there's any dollar figure to that. I mean, then also with the sheriff's office reallocating, that is, that's huge without using outside attorneys. So I don't know if there's a way to put dollars. And I know we also saved, again, we saved positions and money last year on the consolidation of those zoning boards. Again, they're minor, but it makes a big difference, and probably the fire district is different, but that's going to show up.
And these are just a tidbit, and hopefully during those department presentations, we'll have more information. I just want to clarify real quick, on the sheriff's reallocation, again, that should help reduce, it probably won't eliminate all, because there's going to be a need for outside counsel at some point. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, but the amount of money, that was just my, so I just, I appreciate him doing, you know, the working together, and that's one thing that I have, that I've seen. And, sorry, I tried to, so... I have one other. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments at this point? Commissioner Brewer?
Taking the same approach as Commissioner Allen Brand, and I'm trying to focus on a couple of pages of slides, just to affirm some things. Slide number 17, I just want to affirm, because the pie graph, it's a little hard to discern the different, some of the different color boxes, but it looks to me, if I'm reading the pies to color coordination correctly, that when we look at percent of call volume by age group, 50% or more of that call volume is coming from our 65 and older population.
Yes, that's correct.
I just want to underscore.
I believe it's 53%.
53%? Thank you. Thank you, 53%. I'm sorry, I must have missed that particular detail, so I appreciate the patience. And on page, on slide 32, personal property assessed valuation from Appraiser June, and we show change compared to FY fiscal year 2025. Is that decrease, is, are we now taking into account the estimated loss of personal property with the newest property tax elimination of personal recreation vehicles?
That should have minimal of impact. This is really just an estimate right now, knowing that as commercial entities, as that equipment falls off, then there won't be any new equipment coming on for personal property.
I just want to make sure if that's where that would be nestled, is it would be under that category?
Well, yes, that would be in that category, and we'll see that in June, but I think the impact will be minimal and probably within that 5%.
Okay, but it's important to know that action, state took action on recreational personal property like boats and ATVs.
I don't want to speak for the appraiser, but we could try and see if we could get that information.
It just helps me to understand that that's where that's nestled, so thank you. Those were my questions at this point in time. Thank you.
Good. Real briefly to add on Commissioner Allen Brand's point, as we go through the budget presentations and we talk about efficiencies, I know sometimes it is difficult and maybe even not worth the effort. I think it's always worth the effort, but in terms of trying to put a fiscal note on some of these efficiencies, the amount of time and effort and assumptions that would need to be put into place on some of them would make them challenging. I understand that. But the more that we can do to keep a running tab on the fiscal note of efficiencies, I think is helpful, even if there are necessary assumptions that are baked in. Robin, one other point, if you could just help clarify a little bit, and if it requires too much detail, no problem, but on slide 29, you talk about the general budget, and then you talk about the ad valorem-supported budget. I was hoping that you could provide just a little bit more clarity for folks when we're talking about the budgeted county property tax-supported expenditures and then county taxing district ad valorem taxes and just the differences between the delta.
So when we look at our operating budget, it includes every single department. And so some examples of where, what we pull out to get from our operating budget to our county property tax-supported expenditures, a good example would be you would pull out wastewater, they're fee-funded. You pull out airport, completely revenue-funded, they receive no property tax. And then you also have other funds such as district attorney, or the forfeited property funds, the opioid fund, alcohol tax fund. All of those have specific funding sources that we would pull out. You would also pull out transfers, we have interdepartment transfers. So when you pull out those dedicated revenue sources for dedicated services, we take those out, because those really aren't, your county property tax dollars really aren't going towards those services. Then we, then once we get to our county property tax-supported expenditures, those are departments that receive property tax, but it's not all property tax. So a good example is mental health. They receive property tax. However, they also receive CCBHC funding, which is a huge portion of their budget. JCDS, they also receive property tax. Med Act, they receive property tax, but they also bring in other charges for services for revenue. So really, this includes those departments or funds that are receiving property tax. And so that includes that total. Then what we do is, then we just break out, what is our property tax dollar amount that really you have control over that mill levy? And that really equates to $287 million. So if you exclude Parks and Library, it's really $287 million out of the $1.9 billion that the board, you have control over everything. However, that's the, that is what relates to the mill levy and the property tax that the residents are paying. Out of our full budget, it's the 287.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that's helpful. Commissioner Brewer?
Just one add-on question or maybe comment to that page 29. After 30 years of doing grant-supported work in most of my career, I know that a lot of our state and federal grants, not a lot, but a good number of our state and federal grants, and even some of our other sources of grant dollar can require a 25% local match. You know, and part of the rationale behind that oftentimes when you have large funders like that is they want to know that a local community has skin in the game on that program or service that you're requesting grant funding for. And so does that ad valorem help constitute the representation of local match?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, continuing presentation on slide 35, please.
Okay. So as we put together the 2026 budget, these are the primary assumptions that we've used. So you can see the assessed valuation is the 6.12. In the out years, however, we do have it slightly above 5%. But just as you remember from the chart before on the detail, it doesn't mean that we're starting at 5. It means our original real property is really starting at 6% to 6.5%. And this year, we started at 7. So again, assuming maybe with inflation and mortgage rates, that we might have a slight down to about 6.5%. But again, still staying conservative, but just wanted to make sure you're aware, that doesn't mean we're starting at 5, that's the ending point. So we still are starting at a higher amount. Motor vehicle tax, constant 3%. And then local, or local and public safety, sales and use tax, we're looking at 1% to 2.5%. Again, we've seen that trend go down, and again, we're seeing it almost be lower. So we'll continue to monitor that as we go. We have a compensation pool right now of 4%. However, as we all know, health insurance inflation is very high, as well as pharmacy inflation and pharmacy costs, and so we are seeing a 10% increase for the county's healthcare, the employer portion, and we will probably see some shift also to the employees as we move forward in the budget. And then right now, in our five-year forecast, there is no increase for any inflationary impacts. And so as you'll see as we go on, inflation requests for medical, food, postage, fuel, there's nothing included in our five-year for that because we don't have the available funding as we move forward. We look at our general as we move forward. We look at our general fund reserve forecast, based on the previous assumptions, and if no revenue or expenditure changes were made, this would be the trajectory of our general fund balance, with it going below our 28% target in 2028. So it would range from about 28.1% in 2026 to 25.1% in 2030. However, again, this is if nothing else were changed, knowing that we would probably make change again to make that balance. The current five-year outlook shows revenues are not keeping pace to fund the level of services that Johnson County residents have grown to expect. The current forecast, there's not sufficient revenues for inflationary increases, increases due to demand growth, and new services for our growing community. So as we look to the future, there will need to be service-level changes or revenue enhancements to ensure the county continues to maintain its reserve-level targets. As we also talk about our general fund reserves, we want to make sure that we also discuss our rating agencies. As a AAA county, the rating agencies have given us positive feedback in the way we manage the county's finances as having a strong fund balance. Other factors, such as the county's economy and growth, and financial flexibility, contribute to our AAA. So as we look at our long-term outlook, maintaining our fund balance will be a key component to keep our AAA. Now we'll look at our requests for additional resources and give you a little bit more detail on that. We had about 18.5 million of requests from departments that were ongoing. 14.5 of those were tax-supported requests, and we were only able to include about 3.3 million of those. And as you'll see, they really related to inflationary requests, and also just maintaining base level of services. So again, focusing on fundamentals with our limited revenue, these requests represent what was included in the 2026 budget and ongoing tax support for the county taxing district. As you can see, as I mentioned before, majority of these requests were for inflationary increases, such as food and medical contracts, postage, fuel, and then technology. The other increases, or the other items that were included are for maintaining existing services, such as utility assistance and nutrition services, and then also overlays for our roads. Some of those requests for park and recreation that were included were all personnel requests. However, as Penny mentioned, I believe that they are going back and looking at that, and they'll provide any updates to the board during their budget presentations. And then as far as one-time reserves that we've used, really, we've used about 1.9 million for public safety, 2.5 million for infrastructure, about 340,000 for health and human services, which is primarily JCDS reserves, and then also 2.9 million for support services and records and taxation. But again, the primary focus of that is for the gubernatorial election. So our total use of reserves in the 26 budget was 8.7 million for these one-time requests, and 6 million of that is made up of general fund reserves. So then if we look at non-tax funding, we talk a lot about grants, fees, and also the reallocation of existing resources. There's, here's a list, I won't really go into a lot of detail. The really one things that I want to point out is, as you'll see in personnel for county operations and non-grant or fees, it's all reallocations. We have personnel of 770,000, which is reallocation and new revenue. And then we also for support services, again, it's all reallocations or new revenue. Departments took the opportunity, we looked at vacant positions, and for those important frontline services, we were able to reallocate existing FTE or find new revenue to help fund those. And again, you'll receive more of that detail during the department presentations over the next couple of weeks. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk through CIP and some capital needs.
Thank you, Robin. Mark Dapp, Budget and Financial Planning. So one of the recurring themes, obviously, from this presentation is our inability to fund the ongoing needs of the county in operations. There's also a component of that as it relates to capital. So this first slide is a slide that we've been showing for the last couple of years that shows the difference between what the county is budgeting in their forecast for ongoing capital needs, and what the actual demands for that funding is. So first, you'll see that there are public works items that include fleet capital, mill and overlays, bridge, roads, and culvert construction. There's three additional funding requests from Department of Emergency Services related to ambulance funding, radios, AEDs, and equipment replacement. And then there's also capital replacement programming and energy efficiencies from facilities. Currently, we have $8.2 million that is forecasted and budgeted for these purposes, but the true need for this full funding would be $18.2 million. So what you will see frequently is that a portion of these requests will be funded one time, which will be later detailed through the capital improvements program. But we do want to identify that in addition to the ongoing operational shortfalls that we have, that there is a capital component to that as well. So to review the capital improvement program, just as a reminder, the county manager's proposed budget is actually really two budgets. There's the operating component, and then there's also the capital component. So within that is the FY 2026 Capital Improvement Program. You'll see that this graph shows you the source of funding for these capital improvement requests, similar to the slide that was covered where we talk about the $1.9 billion budget that has then stepped down to the $287 million of local tax support. The capital improvement program is very large in dollars, but you can see that the overwhelming majority of those expenses come from non-ad valorem-supported funds. And if you look at this, in particular, you see 92.5% of the total CIP is for dedicated funding sources. Of that, wastewater makes up 66% or 2/3 of the entire capital improvement program. Library is another 10%, and stormwater, which is funded through its dedicated stormwater sales tax, is another 6%. So just something that's very analogous to what we saw on the operations side, that while it starts as a very large number, the amount of county tax dollars that are going to these capital projects is much smaller than that total. So looking at the FY 2026 proposed CIP in a couple of different ways, the total amount of expenditures recommended at $347 million. As previously stated, the overwhelming majority of that, $321 million, comes from dedicated funding sources. For this exercise, dedicated means effectively that those funds would not be available for, to be appropriated otherwise by the board for other purposes. They couldn't go to support general county operations in a, in a general fund sense. So each of these particular groups will be detailed as we go through the department presentations, but just another way to kind of keep in context the separate buckets that go towards funding our capital improvement program. So breaking the projects up into different groups, you'll see that we have $321 million of those dedicated projects. As previously stated, wastewater is the overwhelming majority of that, which is funded with user fees. Airport projects, $2.4 million. This is the local component to match state and federal dollars. So this returns a much larger total project amount, but this is the, the local expenditures that would be incurred to match those. Parks and recreational capital projects, another 14 million, which is supported by their mill levy. The Public Works Cars Program, this $13.1 million amount is specifically the amount that comes from the state that is collected from motor fuel taxes. There's an additional county amount that subsidizes this that we'll discuss in, in future slides. Library projects, similar to Parks and Rec, are funded with their mill levy. And then the sheriff projects, this is a three, $432,000 that is being recommended for funding to upgrade the equipment and the laboratory that we are recommending they use laboratory fee funds for that purpose. So they're collected, related to the laboratory, and then making expenditures from them. There are additional projects that have other funding, so it's not necessarily dedicated funding, but it's not necessarily ad valorem funding either. The first is the GM's infrastructure maintenance. This is for work that is completed in the courthouse specifically, so we're recommending that a portion of that request be funded with public safety 3 sales tax dollars, because that's an eligible use of those funds. Enterprise permit and licensing system is a system that would integrate components of planning, contractor licensing, wastewater, and other outside entities to provide kind of a one-stop shop for enterprise and licensing. That'll be, again, detailed in the department presentations. That amount of other reserves and other revenue sources comes from non-general fund support. There is a general fund component of that that will also be detailed. ADA compliance are for two particular projects that are at our correctional facilities, so we're recommending that we use public safety 1 dollars for that purpose. Facilities, JCDS is an Elmore study, the Elmore Center, so we're recommending JCDS dollars be spent for that. The Sheriff's Operations Security Campus, this is a proposed repurposing of $150,000 of funding that was awarded in FY 25 to study the EVOC facility. The sheriff has identified a higher priority request, and we would propose that those dollars be repurposed for that, which will be detailed during the sheriff's budget presentation. And then finally, there is the, the transit projects component, which you see that the, kind of the local component related to total capital expenditures for transit. And then we also have projects that are funded with general fund reserves. So these will look very familiar. You'll remember the list where we said that we have a number of ongoing requests that are kind of underfunded right now on an ongoing basis, so we subsidize those with one-time expenditures of reserves. In the 26 proposed budget, that includes $1 million for the enterprise permit and licensing system, $252,000 for the countywide radio infrastructure. I will note that this was previously funded with 911 fees, which have then failed to keep up with the amount of revenue that's necessary to support the system. So this is requiring general fund subsidy. The energy efficiency measures, which we'll detail, that all have a five-year payback period. There's additional general fund support for the bridge, culvert, and road construction program that subsidizes the amount of ongoing funding that is there. And then there's the additional 1.5 million for the Sheriff's Operations Campus security updates that would be braided with $150,000 that would be repurposed for a total project cost of 1.65 million, which we will detail what the components of that project will be. And then finally, we have the projects that are actually funded with ad valorem dollars or otherwise debts financed that are supported with debt service or with ad valorem dollars. The first is the Major Asset Replacement Program. This is really capital replacement that is eligible to be capitalized, so it's large purchases that we can then debt finance to tie the cost of that to the payment and the life of the product. DTI Infrastructure Maintenance, this is for servers, uninterrupted power supplies, and other hardware within DTI. GM's infrastructure maintenance is very similar, the actual hardware for the IT equipment itself. This is projects that would be occurring outside of the courthouse and would not be eligible for PS3 funding. DTI Fiber Expansion, which is a continuation of the previous year's requests to be able to maximize our dollars with joining with local partners for fiber expansion. And then you have the Facilities Capital Replacement Program, which is truly kind of end-of-life cycle replacement of what you would think about for, for water systems, roofs, others, kind of related to structures themselves. There are two particular programs that are funded ongoing within, or within public works using tax dollars. The first is the ongoing amount that we have for the bridge, road, and culvert program. That's $1.4 million. We're recommending that be subsidized with another 1.7 one-time. But then also, I want to call attention to the, the $5.7 million worth of ad valorem that goes toward the county contribution, in addition to the $13 million we receive from the state for the cars funding. So once you add the state amount, together with the 5.7 from the local ad valorem-supported amount, you get to a total amount in excess of $18 million. With that, I'll turn it back over to Robin.
All right. Just to wrap up, this really brings us back to the impact to the residents as far as the ad valorem tax for our flat mill levy. And so if you look here, we have it broken down by different house, house sizes, 400,000, 500,000, and 600,000. About 500,000 is the average appraisal value for a single home in 2025. And so if we assume a $500,000 house will receive the 6.12 average assessed valuation growth, that would get them to about 530,000. With a flat mill levy, that would be about a $7 increase per month to their tax bill, or overall about $84 per year for the flat mill levy. And so again, just wanted to look at the differences between different houses and what that impact would be. And then also, just as a reminder, where the property taxes go within that tax bill, the county actually only makes up 15% over the all, on the overall tax bill. Parks and Library, about 2.6% and 2.7%, with schools equaling over 50%. So again, although we collect it, we don't retain it all. And so the county only receives about 15% of that overall tax bill. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Penny to wrap up.
Okay. Thank you, Robin and Mark. So have we, as we have mentioned, the county's had challenges in putting together the 2026 budget, and those continue into '27 and beyond. We are also impacted with uncertainty of federal and state legislation in slowing revenue growth. Even with revenue uncertainty, the county continues to grow in age, increasing the demand for services and continued expectation for quality services. So rather than suggesting sudden and random cuts, as you know, we are taking a strategic approach. We appreciate the work with the Board of County Commissioners on a multi-year approach. Using our partner Resource X, we are evaluating all of our programs and services to identify costs opportunity, or cost savings and revenue opportunities that could improve our financial picture as well. This work will ensure the optimization of our resource alignment. As you are aware, due to the projected challenges in our fiscal health for '27 and beyond, a renewal of our public safety sales tax is an option that could help diversify our revenue without additional tax burden to our community. We will continue our standard practice of looking for efficiencies in the organization and pursue economic development opportunities to help diversify revenue for the county. And I know we've covered a lot of information. This is meant as an overview. There'll be a lot of time in the coming weeks and months to dive down into more detail by department and other areas. I do, we do have calendar to go over, but before we transition into calendar, I do want to take a moment to thank you as the Board of County Commissioners for putting fiscal health as one of your top priorities. Again, working with us to look at a multi-year approach and be able to do, to continue the great work that we're able to do and have options in exploring things that maybe we haven't done before or in a long time to make that work. Also want to thank the budget staff in particular, and I, if everyone in the budget staff could raise their hand, and just want to say thank you for all of your hard work, and the departments that are here and the county manager's office. So it's, it's been a challenging one, but I think we put together something that I am certainly proud of as county manager to present to you, a package that works, that works with the expectations that you all have for our organization, and that's responsible. It shows stewardship. It shows that we can continue, we have a path to continue to do great work despite the challenges that we have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Robin. Well, let's just pause and say thank you to the budget team and others to put this together. And Robin's going to wrap up with the calendar and kind of next steps.
All right. Thank you, Penny. I've already kind of gone through that overview. The one thing that I did want to highlight is we do have five budget open houses scheduled. You can see the dates there. There's one at Corinth Library, Central Resource, Lenexa, Blue Valley, and Gardner Library. And so we have shifted, though, just to one time, 4:00 to 6:30 for those sessions, but we plan to, again, have the same format, a walk-through. We'll have boards there, and we'll have some other information for residents.
Did I hear you say earlier on Olatha one?
No, the budget hearing is in Olatha.
Got it. Thank you.
And then again, I won't go through these as well. You can see the detailed budget schedule for each day. First step next week will be our outside agencies, followed by support services. And so one last bit of detail, we have went ahead and put all of the detail pages in your budget books in the back. If you, I think you two may have them somewhere else, but admin staff has yours as well, all the detail for Commissioner Ashcraft and Brewer. If your book, well, we couldn't find it. But anyway, we didn't want to search through. But again, I'd like to say thank you to the board, to Penny and hers, and all of the county managers, and really all of the departments, as she said. We can't do this alone. It's a very large budget. I, I don't know everything. We have amazing staff, and I, I'm sure the departments wouldn't want me to hear, but I think I have the best staff. But anyway, I just appreciate all of your time during this day.
Well, let me be the first to say thank you. I'm sure everybody's going to say that, but people don't understand the lion's share of the work that goes into this from staff is really, maybe, I was, it's the most important thing we do e- each year, and has the biggest opportunity to impact residents through the decisions that we get to make during the budget process. Not only this year, but when you look at the CIP, which is a whole separate budget, the decisions we, we make have decades' worth of impact. So thank you for the diligence amongst the myriad of other things that you have to do to put this together. Happy to go with general questions here. Obviously, would recognize that we have sessions over the next weeks and months to dive into the details in any particular department, but high-level questions or thoughts at this time are, are welcome. So, Commissioner Allen Brand?
All right. Well, you know, I really appreciate you pulling out items. So with the sales tax renewal, what that can pay for, and what, you know, what's involved in that. And, you know, it's a difficult job setting up here, because I think it would look totally different if the economy wasn't in such turmoil right now in, in trying to forecast what's going on and trying to help people with tax situations. But, you know, our road But, you know, our roads in the unincorporated area where growth is, they are, you know, you look at how much the shortfall and the bridges, you know, the work that needs to be done. So that, and emergency services, just seeing what that need is. So I'm anxious when we will have Resource X program to see if there's things on there that can help us, help us reduce some of their areas as we move forward. But it, also, I appreciate Parks and Rec and the library working with us. It's just, you know, there are so many needs out there in our parks and with having, you know, daycare and after-school, before-school programs and stuff, and it, it's difficult to say no to those things.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, very well organized, very well presented. I sing your praises, and we all do, and appreciate it very much. I do have any number of incidental questions. You go so quickly sometimes, it's just, I'm trying to take notes, and if we could visit maybe sometime next week, I would appreciate just to educate me on a few things and drag him along too, because there were a few things related to the CIP that I, you know, you piqued my interest, my curiosity. I would also be interested in some of the other macro indicators that you didn't capture, but if you had a chance to look at them, because I'd also be interested in the survey results for the ETC survey results for value received for JOCO taxes, how that's changed between now and before COVID, as well as the composite index, total budget, total FTEs, total tax burden on homeowners and population shifts, kind of those macro indicators to get a sense of what the value proposition is for this budget versus historically. And I say something before COVID because COVID mucked everything up, forgive my language. So, you know, I don't want to bias it one way or the other if we could, so. And we can talk about that next week or when we meet.
And a couple of points to build off Commissioner Ashcraft is if we're going to be looking at that in the county, let's look at the holistic picture too. Not only the state's efforts and the state taxes and changes the state has made, so the holistic burden of tax on a person, not just the county in a vacuum, because that doesn't tell the whole story. Also, making sure that we're highlighting what is ad valorem tax-supported and what is sourced from other areas of funding. So again, that we can have an honest apples-to-apples comparison with context on these numbers. I think that's always important. And one thing I'll just ask all my colleagues is why I appreciate that Robin and her team go through a really dedicated effort to meet with us. They met with all of us before this budget presentation to give us a preview. The questions that we ask also have value to other commissioners. So spending the time and actually having this conversation here is a benefit to all of us, and it's a benefit to educate our residents too. And it also saves the bandwidth of time that the budget staff and other staff have when having individual meetings on topics that otherwise will be or would be good to discuss in front of everybody. So I just, I put that out there as an ask in context. The other thing that I think will be difficult through this budget process, if it isn't already difficult enough, I mean, there's $18 million of additional requests just to keep the level of service that we have now, that the people of Johnson County overwhelmingly say that they are satisfied with, and we have $3 million to fund it. That's a 15 million delta in efficiencies that we're going to find this year just to be able to keep the level of service that we have. The level of service doesn't change. The way in which we provide it and the efficiencies that have been found continue to be astounding. And so being able to be honest about that, I think, is also going to be important. And we know that there's a budget process going through in the federal government that potentially has huge consequences on a lot of different things. Medicaid, for example, how that's going to impact not only the way that we have to service our clients, but the needs that people may have might drastically change. I don't know how that's going to impact insurance rates for our employees. I know we have it at 10% and then 5% in the out years. That could have a huge impact, right? And so I think some of this, we'll need to make our best educated determinations and projections, but that, we should keep that in mind as we go through this process as well. Commissioner Brewer.
Thank you, and thank you for your, thank you for your underscoring of the uncertainty happening at the federal level, and that actually is one of the questions or comments or suggestions that I have as we go, as I go through a couple of thoughts. One, I appreciate, and I know it started with the State of the County address, that this is really about fundamentals first. And I think the more and more we can really make that the headline and help folks really understand that that has been the approach to this budget. I know in leading the fiscal health of a number of organizations over my career, not building a budget with inflationary increases already built in is an unusual approach. But the approach you're trying to take is saying, if nothing changed and the dollars were exactly what they were, and then you have any increases, we're really, we're really taking approach of departments showing what those increases look like, including inflationary increases, to really show that difference. So I can't underscore that enough because I will tell you, including leading a political subdivision in another state with tax dollars, I mean, we built in inflationary increase. That was just part of the budgeting process. So this is distinct and unique. When we talk about the presentations, and I'm sorry, I'm getting to that page on Slide 56. First of all, I want to underscore thanks that I think Commissioner Allen Brand said earlier in our business meeting this morning, I believe last year we did three budget?
We had two.
Two. And so we've gone from two to five. And just as Commissioner Allen Brand was noting, thanks for having a budget hearing in her district. I'm also going to notice thanks about having a budget hearing in District Three. I think the more we can go to where people are and make it accessible as possible for them to participate and have an opportunity to hear, to understand, and then within that basis of understanding, then really give some thoughts or some questions that they may have is important. So I know that takes a lot of additional work, and I appreciate that. I did have one question or thought. Were you also planning, in addition to the five in-person open houses, having some type of maybe video online presentation with the budget materials externally online, so that if somebody was unable to attend, they could still maybe access the background plus the materials that we're sharing at our in-person? Is that part of the plan?
We usually post all of our budget boards that we present at the open house online so that people can access that. We have not had a video that would go through and describe those, but that's something we could explore.
It might be something to take in consideration. It allows that level of context that I know when I've attended the budget open houses as a resident, I appreciated hearing some of the context that was given as you did budget highlights, and it answered some of those questions that I would naturally have as I look at the material. And so it might be, it might be an opportunity to do that as well, just to make that as accessible as possible. And then my only other comment echoing on the comments that the chair made about the federal level, you know, in as much as possible, and I appreciate that this county is intentional as we work on our state and federal policy work to work with professionals with expertise in that area, so we can be intentional and active in that work. But we have got to get to the point where we're working with our state, and so this is more of a lecture to some of our state representation, maybe. We've got to work in partnership because there is a vast misunderstanding when folks talk about cutting property taxes. The one, the, where we call home is the number-one type of property that most people think of, and that has not gotten state attention. And it falls to local, and we have to underscore, it's state that can choose to limit or eliminate types of property taxes. When we work on mill, a mill levy means all property, not just residential, and we cannot pick and choose. And that's got to be intentional as we move forward in working with state on collaborative policy. Thank you.
Good points. Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I would, I would say in response to Commissioner Brewer, I think watching a video of this committee of the whole would be probably even more in-depth and more informative for someone who is unable to make it to the, to the open houses, because in my experience, there's really not a formal presentation at the open houses.
So that could be the video.
It could be. I think, I think what we've gone through today is, covers it very, very well. And then I had a question for Commissioner Ashcraft. You had mentioned you had some other questions about the capital improvement program. Is there, is there something you think we should all be thinking about or be asking a question about?
Probably.
I just wonder if you could share some of your questions that maybe we ought to be thinking about when you had asked to speak with Robin and Mark separately. I didn't know if you had something particular in mind that...
No, I really, I really don't. Mostly informational to educate me in terms of some of the things that were said.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're, we're all aware of any potential concerns or information.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thanks, Chair. I was going to bring up the same thing, because it is very helpful, because sometimes I miss things, and some other commissioner will, you know, pick them up. And this is a good opportunity to have these as a video because the questions are being asked. So it is good if we can all hear it. Also, Commissioner Brewer, I want to let you know, since you're new on the, I feel like the last couple of years, we have had more interaction with our state and federal than ever before with our lobbyists that we have, and then also with Aaron Nguyen. I, it's, I feel like it has gone up probably, I would say, 80% compared to what we have done in the past. Not saying anybody didn't do it right, but I think it's just been more of a focus.
All right. Go ahead, Commissioner Brewer.
I'm sorry, I did not want to go until everybody's had a chance. I do have one thing around the capital budgets Mr. Dapp presented. You know, you showed us in that 18 million plus, all those needed capital improvement items. Then you showed us the available dollars within the existing budget that's being proposed, and then how we're getting to some of those other needs with some one-time funds. So it does make me thoughtful, because I know in past years that we have, the county has experienced some out-of-cycle budget requests, right? That have kind of spanned the needs from a, this just happened and we have got to have this addressed, to maybe things that were, had other components in place as they went through the budgeting process. So I am thoughtful as, as we go into budget, you know, fiscal year 2026, and since we're obligating some of those dollars as efficiently as we can, do we leave ourselves any cushion for a very unforeseen situation where, and I, you know, and sometimes I think a capital expenditure can be a more, it needs to be addressed now because this has happened and it has to be remedied. It cannot wait to another budget cycle. I'm just wondering what that looks like.
I would say yes, we do leave ourselves room, because again, we do, we operate to budget conservatively. So we budget a 3%, we call it slippage, where it's a vacancy rate for departments. If they have more than that, then that would be savings that we would have to the, to the bottom line. We also budget or assume that a department will spend 100% of their budget, knowing that not, that doesn't happen all the time. So again, that's additional funding that we would have for, to help us be above that target in the future. Now, understanding, yes, if things change, if we have lower revenues, then we would need to review that as we move forward, and we would maybe have to make shifts within our identified CIP, or we would maybe have to pull back on some of those ongoing infrastructure projects and say, you know what, we're going to maybe push that out a year instead of spending the funding this year, or shift. And so we're continuing, we continually monitor that as we go through the year, as far as where we're at in the budget and our spending, so that we have a pretty good idea of where we'll be and if we have any fluctuations in that.
I would add to that also, that our bond rating agencies look at what's the will, what's the financial management and leadership when there are times, things that come up that are unexpected. That's partially why we have the reserves to the level that we have, so that if we're, we've shown over time that we've done it over and over and again. For example, during COVID, we had to cut 25 million in two weeks. So reserves helped buy us some time, as well as there's things we can do for a temporary situation if we had to hold on capital projects or hold, do a hiring freeze. Those are things we don't like to do long-term, they're not strategic. But if there's an immediate thing that we need to do, we have levers in place that we can use, and the level of reserves helps buy us some time to make more strategic decisions. We've shown that, and that's part of the, when you look at, when Robin showed that slide on the rating agencies, what they look at, when they say strong financial management and the will of the community and the board to make those decisions collectively, that we've shown that we can weather those hard times. In addition to maybe the smaller fluctuations that we have that Robin had suggested, but if there's larger ones, we have mechanisms.
So just to summarize from my understanding, I hear two key things that you're sharing with me. One is that it is permissible, as long as an entity hasn't shown a history of dumping into reserves, and part of that bond rating is a demonstration of responsible fiscal management and maintaining those reserves and not over utilizing those reserves for emergency situations, and that we've shown a history of being able to maintain the reserves without using them as the backstop when something unforeseen comes up. And the reason we've been able to do that is because with department policies around capital improvement programs and vehicle replacement and equipment replacement, we don't put ourselves in a position where if something in that replacement schedule has to be moved around, there's still enough life of that entity to be moved slightly. We don't wait until the very emergency replacement as our, as our go-forward plan. Is that somewhat correct?
I would say yes and no. Yeah, no, I think that you've got the overall idea, but there are times when there's a need to use reserves responsibly, so you still do it within the targeted amount. So there's times when it's needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, on reflection of Commissioner Hanslick's question and to sway at any concerns, I'd just quickly give you a couple of questions that I was interested in talking to Mr. Dapp about. He had talked briefly about the source of fundings and delineated the non-tax ad valorem tax of wastewater being 66%, library sick, or 10, stormwater six, which was 72%. So I was just wondering what happened to the other 20, just trying to understand what the thought process was, or later on, on the transit project, what the status of those funds were, if there was any question in that. And on the next slide, the countywide radio infrastructure, if that included the 911 reserves that Mark is holding or considering that. And on the next slide, the cars dedicated 3.4, 3.43 mil plus our, our extra commitment, kind of what the legal status of that was in terms of what we're required to or obligated to under MOU. I don't think there's any state statute, but those are the kind of things that I was trying to get refreshed on and remember on, so I hope that helps Ms. Hanslick.
If I could offer some of those that you brought up, they'll be opportunistic with the department presentations, some of those will be highlighted, not all of them, but many of those.
Thank you. All right, well, I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you all for being here. One step in a long process, not the beginning, not the end, but a definite, a definite mile post. So thank you all very much, and we look forward to additional conversations starting next week regarding outside entities, and then obviously feedback from residents. next week regarding outside entities, and then obviously feedback from residents. So thank you all very much. We'll go ahead and adjourn the committee of the whole at this time. Everybody have a safe afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.